Welcome to the October 4th meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. And I have great honor this morning to start with our first item on the agenda, which is, I would like to motion to appoint Don Showenhyder to fill the unexpired term of Greg Hanrahan as third ward alderman.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Next order of business would be to have the deputy clerk, Beth Marquez, to administer the oath of office to Don. Don, if you want to step on up.
You could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Donald P. Showenhyder.
I, Donald P. Showenhyder.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
And state of Illinois.
And state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
That I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhaus.
Here.
Alderman Novett.
Here.
Alderman Widman.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Marsh is absent. Alderman Showenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Luby.
Present.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you please join me in a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Our next order of business this evening is reports of city officers, and the first being comments by mayor. And I would like to take a few moments to just welcome Don to the council. I know Don is going to do extremely well here. He's extremely well qualified, having served six years from the building review board, one year as the past chairman. He's also served on the Laurel Avenue Redevelopment Committee, the Barrow Citizens Committee, and the Conway Farm Homeowners Association Board of Directors. In the short time he's been in Lake Forest, he's been very busy, and we're going to keep him, again, occupied here for quite a while. I think, as many in the public may not know, that Greg Hanrahan moved from the third ward to the first ward, therefore, there is a portion of his term that Don will step in and fill, and is hopeful that we can get Greg to step up and fulfill his last term over in the first ward. So, we're working on that. So Greg, if you're watching, we haven't forgot about you yet. But we'll get you back. But, Don, welcome, and you're going to be jumping right into the thick of it, so I know you're well-prepared and you'll do great.
Thank you.
The next item we have this evening is a presentation regarding Red Ribbon Week, presented by Karen Cunningham, the lead program director. Come on up.
Good evening. And I would like, on behalf of lead, to thank the city of Lake Forest for their continued support. And this year's Red Ribbon Celebration will begin October 25th and end on November 7th, where we have our third annual Red Ribbon Race, which is a 2K run and, excuse me, 5K run and two-mile walk for families at Alwa Farms. And Lake Forest will be decorated by the scouts with red ribbons to help remind parents to speak up to their children about smart choices when it comes to drugs and other risky behavior. In addition, the Speak Up Prevention Coalition is launching a community-wide drug collection program with the help of the Lake Forest Police Department. And we really want all families to, encourage all families, to dispose of their unwanted medication safely. And so, we want to get this brochure into the hands of all parents, and it's about the abuse of prescription and over-the-counter drugs and information on disposing of your unwanted medication safely at the police department. So thanks again for all your support. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Karen? No?
Can I just, you know, these?
Thank you. Good luck with the week. Appreciate everything you do for the community and lead, taking up this effort. Thank you. Let's conclude my comments. The next order of business is the comments by city manager. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I wasn't sure if this was the appropriate time on the agenda that the new alderman has to sing his college fight song.
Bob, I think, I think you missed that time.
Okay, we'll, we'll take care of that next time. Actually, I have three items under my agenda this evening. The first item is to get an update from the Forest Park Project Board this evening. Chairman Ralph Justwald is here. Ralph?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, alderman and honorable mayor, for allowing me to come in front of you tonight and to give you a very brief update on Forest Park and answer any questions you may have. We have met four times for Forest Park over the last four months. We have one meeting a month. We have set up an executive board, or are in the process of setting up an executive board. I am the president of the executive board. We have co-vice presidents with one vote, Joan Dupuy and Jane O'Neil. Our secretary, Pam Bailey, has volunteered to be the secretary for our group, and Sandy Stewart has volunteered to be the treasurer. We are going to have a number of at-large members. Paul Bergman and Mark Goodman have agreed to be at-large members on the board. When I say "at-large," they're not going to have official offices, or they're not going to be in charge of any of the committees. We still have two open at-large members that we're still looking for. We have a historic preservation chair, Michael Ebner; public communications chair, marketing chair, Karen Sendrude; landscape horticulture chair, Cliff Miller; and co-chairs for engineering and technical, Tom Swarthout and Steve Douglas, have been nice enough to volunteer their time. We have two committees at this point in time that we do not have chairs for. We're hoping that the chairs will come from our committee meetings. I will most likely head up the first couple committee meetings, and then hopefully somebody will come out of the ranks. Memorial and amenities chair we're looking for, and a finance and fundraising chair. And once again, we hope they come from the committee members that we have up to this point. As I've mentioned, we have six committees in addition to the executive board. The committees will meet the first two weeks of every month, and our executive committee will meet on the first Wednesday, the third Wednesday of every month. We, the committees have selected tonight, we had a handout tonight, I've given you out some of the chairs, as well as information on who's volunteered for different committees. The list, the committees were chosen by their committee chairs, along with the executive board. We did it from the list of volunteers that we received from the city and from the Park and Rec Board. And even though we didn't use everyone on the list, we tried to be as diverse as possible in creating those committees. Diverse in gender, diverse in age, and diverse in ward selection. We had a number of people that volunteered, of course, from the first ward, because they're affected by the park, you know, the neighborhood is right there. But we felt this wasn't a neighborhood park, it's a community park, it's a Lake Forest park, and we wanted to reach out to people from other wards. So we spent some time trying to find people from the second, third, and fourth ward to be on those committees as well. We'd like to invite city council to attend, anyone that would like to attend the executive committees that are on the third Wednesdays of every month, as well as any of our committee meetings. We are going to have a website set up, hopefully by the end of this month, that'll list our committee dates, so if any of the council members would like to come to the committees, we'd like you to come, and we'd invite you, of course, to come. The website is also going to be used to answer any questions that the public may have, and to keep the public informed on what's going on, and not only at the committee level, but the executive level, and update them on any changes that are being made to the, to the process that we're doing. Our meetings, our committee meetings and our executive committee meetings are going to be closed meetings to the public, but we are going to have a number of meetings that will be open to the public. We think it's important to reach out to the public, bring them into some of the meetings at the executive level, as well as the committee level. So we will have a number of meetings that are open to the public, and once again, we'll advertise those on our website, and hopefully use some other avenues as well. Our 501(c)(3), our fundraising aspect of it, is being set up. We had looked at a couple different ways to set it up, and Paul Bergman and Mark Goodman, that are not only at-large members of the executive committee, but have agreed to be on a subcommittee, a legal subcommittee, that will help us develop that 501(c)(3), and they're in the process of doing that now. We hope to have that set up sometime in the next 30 to 45 days. We have, once again, we reached out and tried to make our committees as diverse as possible. We reached out to some of the groups that were more vocal and more passionate about it, like Friends of the Park, and a number of people from Friends of the Park have volunteered to be on our committees, as well as people that never had any information about Forest Park before. We thought it was important, not only to get those that were against it or for it, but those that didn't have any, didn't have any opinion on it, to bring those on our committees. So once again, we think we took some time to make our committees as diverse as possible. That's my brief update. I'm here to answer any questions that I'm qualified to answer, which, which may be limited.
Just a quick one. The website that you're going to have, can we get a link from the city's website to that? I know that this is really a non-city, a such private one, but it, when people would call to ask, it would be easy for the council to say, there's a link off the city website, which is easy to find.
Yeah, if the city would allow us to do that, I think that'd be great, because a lot of people, I think, at this point in time are going to the city website, trying to find out information.
To look, yeah.
And it's not there. We are going to ask, and one of the things we'd like to ask, is the city to get this information up on their website as quickly as possible. Who's on the committees, what the committees, how the structure of the committees. That'll help answer some of those questions, but we hope, once again, to have our website up before the end of the month.
Good.
Can we do that, Bob?
We certainly can.
Okay.
And I say that without even looking ahead, Susan Banks or Ann Wilkerson.
There you go. Ralph, I, sorry.
I have a question about the, call it diversity of position, if you will. You mentioned that the committees have people who are pro and con, and maybe are also neutral. The executive committee has potentially 16 members, of which apparently 12 are already appointed. Is the executive committee diverse also in terms of their position with respect to the project overall?
Yeah, I believe they are. I believe we reached out to some of the committee chairs that hadn't had any knowledge of the process, had any knowledge of the issues on the process, on the, on the park. I think we're diverse. One of the reasons why we have those at-large members, we haven't assigned them all, is because I think it's part of my responsibility to make sure that it's as diverse as possible. So that's why we haven't rushed in putting everyone on a committee, everyone on the executive committee. So I think that's the challenge that I have, as the, as the president of it, is to make sure that we maintain that objectivity during the process.
Right. I think what we hear from you later on will be a function of, you know, who the people are that made the assessments, so we'll take that into account.
Yeah, we have talked at the executive committee as well about compromise, of about diversity, of about having open minds, and one of the things that I've challenged everyone that has accepted a position on the committee is to make sure that they're coming on that committee with an open mind, and with objectivity, because if they're not, you know, the process isn't going to work.
Ralph, about how many members do you have overall? I'm counting, I'm probably duplicating some, but is it about 40 members total that you'll have from the?
Correct.
That's, so you have a good group there, that's with all the different subcommittees and the like?
Yeah, we talked about numbers, and even though I didn't want to get locked in on a, that committees had to be set up of nine members or 10 members, you know, we think some committees need to be larger than others. We really haven't delved into the fundraising committee at this point in time, but I think that's probably going to have to be the largest committee of them all, and we haven't even got started with that committee. We left some of that objectivity up to the committee chairs, how many people they wanted, you know, so I think by the time the process, we still have some open positions on amenities, open positions on fundraising, and I know that Tom Swarthout is also looking at a number of people for the engineering committee as well, along with his co-chair. So I think we'll have well in excess of 50 members, or 50 participants on these committees by the time we're all done.
I got one more question for you. As far as timing, obviously, we hear a lot, here at our level and through the city, once you get all these folks together, do you have a, will you have a calendar as far as, you know, laid out for the year, for six months, for three months? How is the timing, and how's it going to work, and how is the public going to be aware of the timing?
We hope to set up a calendar at our next executive committee over the next six months. One of the things that I have been careful not to do is to lock ourselves into timelines or dates. I think one of the worst things we could do is rush this process. Until we're satisfied, as an executive committee, that we've searched all alternatives and made sure that we're making the right decisions, before we come in front of the HPC or Park and Rec Board, and of course, eventually, city council. So we don't want to get locked in on a timeline, but we will have our committee meetings set over for the next six months, and we will have a sample timeline of where we think we'll be in the next six months. But once again, we don't want to get locked into it.
And, going to ask the question that I don't want to ask, you know, looking on the boards and committees, and I'm thrilled this is moving along, because I've gotten, I'll say, a lot of phone calls, a lot of letters expressing a wide range of opinions on the forest, on the park project. Noting on the lists that have been supplied of members of the committees, you know, this list obviously expands beyond Lake Forest. There are certain members on the boards, executive board, that don't live in Lake Forest. So, we're drawing, obviously, talent that goes beyond the community. I've just, I'm trying to get a, at least a feel, just so I could answer questions that are going to be put forth to me, why we're expanding beyond people that live in Lake Forest.
Once again, we wanted to reach out to the people in the area that had the expertise that could help move this forward. You know, we didn't limit ourselves on any one group or any one, you know, ward. There were some opportunities of people outside Lake Forest that had a great deal of knowledge about Forest Park, and that had offered their time, and also had offered their services. Mark Goodman, for example, had offered his legal services, you know, to help the project, and we thought that was a positive. There's another member on the, on one of the committees that actually came out of the Friends of Forest Park. We had asked them who they felt they would like to see on the committee to represent the Friends of Forest Park, and that was the name that we received for them. He has a long history in Lake Forest, he's somebody that I thought added extreme value, so we thought that was an exception we should make as well.
I appreciate it, just so I could answer the question now instead of my phone calls during the week.
And I, and I'm sure that a lot of council members have received a number of phone calls on the project, and one of the things we hope to do is set up that website, because I think that the lack of knowledge or the lack of information, I shouldn't say knowledge, has caused some of that apprehension. And I think we need to be as open as possible. That's why we're going to have some of our meetings will be open to the public. That's why we think we need the website. But we need your help in making sure that if there is a question, and I know that some of you have reached out to me in the past, that hopefully I've gotten back to you expeditiously and answered your questions, and I think it's important to keep those lines of communication open.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ralph.
Thanks for your time. Good luck.
Appreciate it. And congratulations.
The next item on the agenda, I know that you can all feel the excitement in the air, and that's because homecoming for Lake Forest College is just around the corner. And here this evening, we have another special guest with us, which is President of Lake Forest College, Stephen Scott, to give us an update as to what's going on on campus.
Well, thank you very much, Bob, and Mayor Cowie, and members of city council. It's a great pleasure to be with you tonight. Before I start, just to play off a joke from a few minutes ago, I thought I'd ask Bob Kylie if he could sing his college's fight song. But maybe we'll, we'll do that later, when, when our new councilman does as well.
I heard he was doing the Star Spangled Banner at the, Banner at the football game.
He's a man of many talents, I know that. It's a pleasure to be with you again this evening, and it's a special privilege for me, this fall, which is the eve, I guess I'd say, of the city's own sesquicentennial next year. I know a number of members of the college community have been involved in various aspects of the city's planning for that celebration, and all of us certainly look forward to being part of that and celebrating with our fellow citizens in the city of Lake Forest as that important anniversary comes around. So, we look forward to that, and I'm glad to be able to, to be here at this time with that in mind. The last year, we've just finished the 2009-10 academic year, and of course, we've started on this new one now. The last year has actually been a very good one for the college. I wasn't certain a year or so ago, as I looked ahead, if I would be able to say that, because we faced the same economic challenges, of course, that the city and our country have been facing, continue to face in a number of ways. At the college, those challenges expressed themselves most largely through the additional financial aid that so many of our students really needed to have to remain enrolled, and that's simply a reflection of the economic travail that their families may have been experiencing, because our students come from across this country, and certainly beyond this country, from as many as 50 different countries around the world. So the economic challenges that we're all continuing to deal with are very much affecting them as well. The happy news for me in that regard, though, is that we were at the college able to meet the financial aid demands that so many of our students came to have, not only last year, but this year as well. And as a result of that, I just want to take one point of pride and say that Lake Forest College is one of, a group of 12 colleges or universities across the country that have been identified in a financial aid honor roll by the Princeton Review, which is one of the guidebooks that analyzes and rates colleges each year. But in terms of our student satisfaction with our extension of financial aid to them and meeting their circumstances, we are one of 12 that have the highest rating in that regard nationwide. So we're very proud of that, and as a result of that, there are literally many students in college today who would not be there had we not been able to, to help meet that need. With all of that nevertheless, we were able to balance our budget, as we always do, and we look forward to doing that again this year, and at the same time, provide, I think, and I'm biased, of course, in this regard, but, an outstanding education to our 1,400 students in, in all respects, really. Couple of good things to just highlight from the last year. One of them, maybe both of them, you're all aware of, but the first, I suspect many of you may have seen a story, or at least heard last spring, about the wonderful bequest from our 100-year-old alumna, Grace Groner, who died last January, but left an amazing fund of $7 million to work to the benefit of Lake Forest College students, who are going either on study abroad programs, or doing internships, which are so important to students today as they prepare for the future after college. But that entire bequest is there with the great generosity of recently departed Grace Groner to make it possible for students to engage in these enriching opportunities. And we're, of course, very grateful to her. In addition to Ms. Groner, we're grateful to Lake Forest residents in particular, Bill Marlat and Bob Pasquazi, who are helping administer her estate, and have also very personally been involved in restoring her small cottage on Washington Road, just south of our sports complex, which is now going to be permanently a memorial to her and a place where one, or conceivably two, senior women from the college live every year, and turn it into a kind of gathering space for those students who are receiving the benefits from her great generosity. So, we're very pleased about all of that and privileged to have that. The other good thing, that I think at least a couple of you may already have taken advantage of, and for the rest of you, tonight is my, my opportunity to extend an invitation to you to come to our new recreation facility that was added on to our sports, sports complex on South Campus, was finished this last, this last summer with a great deal of help from our friends at the city, certainly Bob Kylie and Kathy, Kathy Cerniak, but all of you as well. We thank you for your support of that important addition for the college. It's one that I think is going to be a real resource for the community, as well as our students, and we're certainly hearing from many members of the community who look forward to taking advantage of it and perhaps become community members of that facility in times ahead. In addition to that, I'm also very pleased that as of, I think, literally three days ago, we have improved, or we're in the process of improving, the appearance of the entrance to South Campus off of Sheridan Road down by that new facility, by having taken down, finally, a small house that was right there on the corner, that was really in the way, and now with it gone, leads to a much more unobstructed view of not only the new facility, but our, our entrance to South Campus, that will continue to beautify in times ahead, that we're, we're very pleased about. Thanks to the addition to the sports center and to a number of other improvements on campus over the last several years, we are now in a position at the college to contemplate, over the next five to six years, modest and gradual growth in our student enrollment. To put a number to that, we're at about 1,400 students now. That's about where we've been for the last four or five years. That is full enrollment for the college as we stand. Our plans are to grow by approximately 300 students over the next five years to about 1,700. The important thing for me to say immediately is only about half of those additional students will be on campus, because about 150 will be additional students who will be on a range of study abroad programs that we sponsor, and will be taking advantage of a new facility in the city of Chicago that we're opening this next year, a residential facility downtown that will house as many as 35 or 40 juniors and seniors who are doing semester-long internships in the city, which is going to be an exciting addition for the college and a new opportunity for a number of our students working in the city as well. But that growth will take place gradually. The only addition to campus that we contemplate in regard to that now will be probably the replacement of our oldest residence hall, which is Moore Hall on South Campus, which frankly, should have been replaced some time ago. But replacement of that with a new student residence hall sometime in the next two to three years. We're only in the early stage of planning that out, and we'll, of course, be talking at length with our colleagues at the city and also our neighbors about how to do that in the best way possible for, for our students and for the neighborhood as well. I'll just end by saying that I gave Mr. Kylie a number of brochures to pass out, I hope, to each of you at the end of the meeting tonight, about our homecoming, which starts the end of this, actually, it really starts tomorrow, but the gist of our homecoming is on Friday and Saturday at the end of this week. We will be putting door hangers on the doors of all the houses that are proximate to campus, identifying the same events that you have in that brochure, and inviting our neighbors, as we hope they will, to come to homecoming and share in that celebration with us. But to just highlight two or three things that are important additions this year, on Thursday night, there will be an antique auto show on the grounds of Glen Rowan that our students are doing and sponsor, are helping to sponsor in cooperation with local auto society. Friday afternoon, for those of you who are academically oriented, and I hope that applies to all of you, there is a, there is a wonderful faculty-student academic symposium Friday afternoon, to kick off the formal part of homecoming generally. That will be at several different locations on our campus, in particular, the Donnelly and Lee Library. Grand opening of the sports center that I mentioned earlier will take place late Friday afternoon into early Friday evening, and everyone here, and certainly members of the community, are invited to come to the grant, that grand opening as well, and if they or you have not been there yet, take that opportunity to see the facility, come to understand what, what resources it can provide as a new addition to the community. Then, of course, on Saturday, the, the annual parade that we always have, student-led parade and the football game Saturday afternoon, and I've been promised that the weather will be great, and we look forward to seeing as many of you there as possible. It's always a great celebration. We expect a large crowd this year, and it's something that allows us to show off the town, as well as our own campus, to our guests. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, but certainly appreciate the city's support, and just want to reiterate how, how pleased we are to be part of this city and certainly look forward to the celebration next year of the city's 150th anniversary, so.
Who are you playing for, homecoming?
We're playing Beloit. And I, this is a, as I think the phrase goes, this is a building year for our football team. We're doing, we're doing very well in a number of other areas. I would, I would highlight women's tennis in particular, where we are, I believe, 10 and 2 at this point. Football is still aspiring to that kind of record, but we're, we're on our way, and I have high hopes for this Saturday afternoon.
The Bears set a very low bar for you last night, so.
And actually, two members of the council, Greg Hanrahan is off council now, and Tom Marsh are Beloit College alumna, so luckily they're not here today.
You went to Rip It? Well, you know, but no accounting for choice. Any other questions?
I understand Bob Cady is going to be the honorary grand marshal of the parade as well.
You know, I've been looking to have that opportunity actually for a number of years. It never gets extended to me. I'm not sure why.
He's stepping up to volunteer.
That's right. The statute of limitations hasn't run out yet, so.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Next on the agenda, certainly another matter generating awful lot of excitement and actually a lot of complaints around town right now is the election signs that are up. And to brief everybody as to, or reminder as to what the rules and regulations are in the city of Lake Forest, Kathy's going to walk us through it. Kathy?
Just very quickly, we have been receiving a lot of phone calls, a few from people who would like to put out signs, most of the calls from people who would like us to remove signs. So, just so everyone is clear, we are now within the time during which signs can be displayed. They may be displayed on private property, they may not be displayed on public right-of-way. Signs on public right-of-way will be picked up and removed. One sign per candidate or issue may be displayed on a private property. There's no limit on the total number of signs. There's always a lot of confusion on that. Finally, signs can be up to six square feet. They can be a maximum of four feet in height from the ground to the top of the sign. Any questions on that?
And where do they take the signs when they remove them from the right-of-way? Because that's always the first call is where did they go?
We do bring the signs out to the municipal services facility out on Field Drive. You can pick the signs up there, depending on how many we have. We don't keep them forever. When we get a bunch of them, we do recycle them. We do encourage that election signs be removed as quickly after the election as possible.
Can you remind people the general parameters of the right-of-way?
In general, the right-of-way is about 66 feet wide, 33 feet when measured from the center of the street, so you can walk that off. Another way to look at the right-of-way is on public streets, often the right-of-way is just beyond the sidewalk. So, if you put it in what is essentially your front yard, back from the curb and back from the sidewalk, you're usually safe. On some streets, it's difficult to tell. We don't go out there with the tape measure, those that are close to the street. We do enforce, based on complaint, all of our inspectors are also instructed if they see signs in the right-of-way violation to pick them up so that we're not making special trips.
Just for people's knowledge, generally if they have a fence along the front, a stockade fence or whatever, along Green Bay or Deer Path, if they're in front of the fence on the street side, generally they are not in compliance then, correct?
If they are right up against the fence, because the fence can be on the property line. If the sign is right up against the fence, we consider it to be compliant, in compliance.
Middle out there closer to the street, generally those are not in the right location.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
And the last item I might report in the absence of Alderman Morris for the Housing Trust Committee is that at the October 18 city council meeting, we will have on the agenda that evening both discussion of the city's affordable housing plan as well as the settlers' green term sheet. And we will make sure that that is posted on our website and notice goes out to all the interested residents. And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda is council committee reports, first being the Finance Committee, Alderman Grumhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all will recall, at the last finance and city council meetings, we needed to consider the fiscal year 12 fiscal policy. There were some changes that were outlined. I had also proposed some additional language, which has now been more properly wordsmith than what I had put forth on pages two and four, I believe, as well as some additional language that was put in regarding land sales and fund restrictions. So, I think at this point it's been pretty well vetted, but I'm happy to take any comments if anyone has any. Otherwise, I'll assume we will take a motion to accept the fiscal year 12 fiscal policy.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
And secondly, we had a consideration of amendment to the city's mission statement. This is on page 14. I don't believe this changed, did it, Bob?
It hasn't changed from what the council talked about at this last meeting. It's probably worthy to note, though, that the recommendations were, for fewer words, were put forward by an attorney, which I think is a first.
He no longer practices, correct?
That's right.
I have to pay attorneys now.
But we take a motion to accept the new mission statement.
So moved on the mission statement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries as well.
That's it for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Alderman Grumhouse. The next item on the agenda is report to the Housing Trust, Alderman Morris, who is absent this evening. As Bob just mentioned, we will be addressing more of those issues on October 18 and those will be posted. The next item therefore is Laurel and Western Avenue Redevelopment Committee, which is also Alderman Morris, again, absent this evening, which brings us to the Legal Committee, Alderman Palmer.
No report.
Next being Senior Resource Commissioner, Alderman Novit.
And largely, nothing to report. There will be a meeting, though, I believe it's later this week, with members of the Housing Trust and members of the Senior Resource Center to discuss housing policy or affordable housing policy in the community to get input from the Senior Resource Committee. We do have a meeting, a regular meeting, though, coming up, I believe, next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item being the Public Works Committee, Alderman Luby.
Public Works has some great things to report. Green Bay Road paving is complete with just a few minor things being addressed. Western Avenue is complete, including the landscaping, which looks very nice up and down the street. Couple of small things they're still fixing. The Old Elm Water Main Project is wrapping up and paving is scheduled to take place this Wednesday, so that will be done. At the Public Safety Building, the new HVAC work is underway and should be completed by next week. The Recreation Center HVAC, the locker room area is scheduled for the middle of November. And the golf course, Northcroft and South Beach Pavilion roofs are under contract and being scheduled and that should be done before, I would assume, December 1st. So, the road construction is finished. It's a great, great day in Lake Forest.
You heard it here.
You heard it here. Hopefully, nothing else is going to be taking place. Good report there.
You also have the...
Oh, I have the Ward of the Preliminary Engineering Service Contract and that will be presented by Ramesh and Ken. Yeah, that's the whole rest of the agenda here.
Are you two breathing easier? Life feel like a weight's been lifted from your shoulders.
It's a light day in the office now.
No, we're looking forward to the next year.
Next year, right. It never ends.
Engineers never sleep. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Welcome, Dan, of the council. So, as you can see, excitement never stops at the council meetings. Today, I'm here, as Alderman Luby has mentioned, we've been going over this report for the past six months. As part of the Waukegan Everett corridor improvements, a study was organized, a study was done by engineering firm to check out basically what are the issues we have in that corridor, what are the safety improvements can be made, and more importantly, what traffic safety enhancements we can make in this, as you can see, very busy corridor. Council, the Public Works Committee looked at the report on September and October of '09 and in December, the council accepted the report. And out of those reports, there are few recommendations which the council thought were very important for this side of town. All of those recommendations, five of them were the ones the council said that these are like the priority recommendations that we should look into moving forward. Just to update you on those five options, which the council and also, which was also discussed in the Public Works Committee report in September. Option one was to extend that eastbound right-turn lane on Everett to southbound Waukegan. That was, again, the council and the traffic study report and the residents all mentioned that the traffic usually backs up on Everett in that west approach. And so, that was like one of the main options to work on is that extend that eastbound right-turn lane. Obviously, this involves ICC with the railroad tracks, involves, city does have the property at the southwest corner of that, but involves ICC, IDOT, Waukegan Road belongs to IDOT, and also Metra. So, there's three agencies which involve, but at least that option is there. The next option was to addition of a northbound right-turn lane on Telegraph to eastbound Everett. Again, this option is all within the city property. It's a, you know, like to add a right-turn lane because one of the other issues we heard through that traffic report was there was a lot of cars were backing up on Telegraph, especially during school hours, and they were not able to get into the lane. Now, they got a stacking lane and people who want to go to the station straight across, there is no traffic, you know, so they both are not fighting in the same lane. So, it's two separate lanes, so add a northbound right-turn lane. The option four, again, which is, this is also a tough option, is to add a southbound right-turn lane on Waukegan to westbound Everett. This was, again, identified by a lot of fender benders we had there where people, again, stack up on that southbound approach and then they want to go westbound to Everett. Option five was to modify the Waukegan Everett as we found out from the report that there were, you know, a lot of freight trains and the passenger trains go through that intersection. And there is something we can do once the train passes to extend the lights on Everett so that, you know, you can relieve some of the congestion on Everett. So, that's something we're going to be talking to the IDOT, you know, again, it's IDOT. The way IDOT does their signal coordination is they look at the entire corridor, they just don't look at Waukegan and Everett, they look from like 22 all the way down to 137. And with the Waukegan Road having like 40,000 to 50,000 average cars per day, they want to move those traffic. And, you know, so what we call is the secondary streets, which are the cross streets, are not given that much green light. But at Waukegan, Everett is a unique situation with the train station and the number of trains we carry. So, there might be some opportunity there. Again, we have to discuss that with IDOT. And the option seven is that implement pedestrian safety. Some of the stuff we have done, like adding that crosswalk, put those crosswalk signs, and with this Waukegan Streetscape lighting project, we're going to add some pedestrian push buttons at Waukegan and Everett to enhance those safety items. So, the study, which we are recommending right now, the proposal is to do what we call is a preliminary phase one for option one and four, because those require IDOT, ICC, and Metra approval, at least find out what are the terms, is there any right-of-way purchase, what are the timelines, and what is the actual cost of that. Option two, they're going to do a phase two, which is like ready to go with the construction drawings because all the properties within the city of Lake Forest, and we can do that. And then, again, talk to IDOT on option five and also on option seven, which we are going to implement right now. So, this proposal is to, again, to do a phase one for option one and four and do a full phase two for option two. And when funds are available in future, we can at least, there's a set of plans, good, ready to go to bid that project. Just to show, you know, what those options are, just to put in drawing. Option one is the eastbound, so this is Waukegan Road, Everett, Telegraph. Option one is to extend this lane, as you can know, right now, there's only two or three cars can sit beyond the tracks as they head to southbound Waukegan. This option will extend it all the way beyond the tracks, west of the tracks, so that now you got at least 10 to 12 cars who are going to be in this right-turn lane that will free up the traffic who are going left northbound Waukegan or want to go straight. So, in the morning rush hour, for the, you know, the study, they found out that a lot of cars were making the right turn. So, this option will be to extend this eastbound right-turn lane. As you can see, there's a Metra crossing here and also Waukegan. We are going to be involved with the Waukegan right-of-way. So, this will require a coordination between ICC and IDOT and see what entails in terms of what is allowed and what is not allowed and also the structure to move some of this This is the option two, again, this is Telegraph, our fire station is here, Telegraph Road, Everett. This option, again, puts a right-turn lane here so that the cars in the morning rush hour during the school and all residents who want to go to the train station has a clear shot, they can go, and then the cars going to the eastbound Everett are stacked up in this lane. We will also add a sidewalk here so that, you know, the commuters can walk, you know, take the sidewalk to cross to the station. Again, this is the one where we're going to do the phase two, complete engineering, and since this is all city property, we don't have to get any approvals from outside agencies. This option was not considered by the council because, again, this is an option three, I'll just go over, was to extend this, add left-turn lanes to northbound Telegraph here and also extend this left-turn lanes to Waukegan. This does involve purchasing right-of-way from the properties to the south. And at that time, the council decided that this option is not, you know, viable in terms of improving that much, again, traffic safety in terms of trying to stack cars here and trying to get this property from private owners to extend this particular approach because most of the traffic, again, does go to right-bound on Everett. This is the option four, which is that this is again, Waukegan, Everett, was to add a right-turn lane to going to westbound Everett. And again, this all belongs to the IDOT jurisdiction. Just to give you, again, that's on the proposal, so if you have any questions on the proposal, I can answer before I go to that.
On the street lighting there, on the south end coming down Everett, are we going to put those back far enough that we won't have to redo it all if we put that turn lane in?
Right now, Alderman Luby, like the property line is pretty close to where we are, so the streetlights are put in as far as back as possible. But we do have to, we are going to do a, what we call is intersection design study, so that may entail moving some of them right now. But for now, we are putting as far back as possible and we have to relocate the signal lights, too. So, that will be part of the cost to relocate as part of it. So, we are asking for a motion to...
So, we're not looking to do anything on westbound Everett?
This option?
Like St. Patrick's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, here, because this option here...
Because we'd have to take, we'd have to cut their property.
Property, that's correct.
The idea there is if we can get the light to change faster so that people can get around there.
Okay.
So, you don't have a three-minute, four-minute, five-minute wait.
And for the sake of it, again, I think I'm a lone council member, the option six, which wasn't on there, which is a potential for a light at the intersection of Conway and Waukegan, there's no thought of for the study for IDOT, which would at least say how much the cost would be, that that could be included with options one and four for the state study on cost?
As part of that, when the traffic report was brought up, that option was considered. And what they realize is like Conway Road on the east side, obviously, it's a shopping center, so it won't meet what we call is the warrant for a traffic signal. It won't have that much volume where a traffic signal can meet. And that's why it was never considered by the council to move forward for consideration.
Just a thought, because in the report, it does say that a lot of people aren't using that intersection because there is no signal, so it's not a viable or safe area to turn. But it will relieve congestion probably in an estimate of 10 to 15 percent. And the stacking area for cars in that area going westbound is, if there's a train, is far greater than at Everett. And the idea if we're going to relieve congestion, that would be a way to relieve congestion at the intersection. And the volume of traffic, when there's trains in that area blocking the streetway on Everett, there's nowhere for them to go. So, at least we'd be taking some of that away. These plans are great, they'll move traffic when the trains aren't there. They won't relieve congestion at all when a train's blocking that streetway.
Right. Again, I think, Alderman, we can look into, I think, as part of the report, I think they did look, they look at that option, there was option, there was a lot of discussion at that Conway to signalize that intersection. The study felt that like it won't warrant, you know, you got certain warrants have to be met. Knock on wood, there was not, you know, there were few acts, again, obviously, one of the reasons a signal light can go is like if you have a lot of accidents. And at that time, at least, you know, there were not many accidents as compared to this particular intersection. That's why... That's why one of those warrants did not meet for it to have an, having said that, as part of our discussion for signal lights, we will certainly take a look at it and see if that option is still viable or not. Sure.
I mean, it is a big chunk of money, and, you know, I'm not sure people want another red light. That's the other issue we have to consider.
I think a lot of residents don't want one.
Right.
And you've got the next one at the intersection for, you know, McDonald's and Sunset, then the next one is going to be, what'll happen is you're going to be channeling a lot of traffic going west on Conway to avoid the lights-
Right.
...and make the traffic worse down that residential area there.
And you also have one just down the road at the high school, so then you're going to have a fourth one.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if people are going to get tired of the lights, they'll be trying to cut around, not to get stopped at every corner through there.
Could we synchronize?
I think it's just, not only the warrants, but I'm not sure you meet the IDAT criteria for spacing between traffic signals.
Right. It's, they are a thirty-five mile per hour zone dedicated, but again, it has to meet a certain, you know, forty, forty to fifty thousand cars per day on Waukegan and Conway, you know, it's like maybe five or two thousand, so the cross traffic doesn't warrant that. But again, for the discussions, sure, we will-
But that's also an IDAT criteria for spacing between traffic signals-
Traffic signal lights, right.
On a, on a right-of-way.
Right.
I mean, a, I'm sorry, right-of-way, but a roadway, so, I mean, I forget the criteria for number of feet between those signals. I'm not sure you meet that from Conway to Sunset.
Conway to Everett, yeah. That, right, that, again, that could be one of the, no, you asked, we tried to answer as best we can.
Ramesh, I did have one question.
Sure.
And forgive me if you've covered this in past meetings and I weren't here. Looking at the Waukegan Road lighting and Streetscape project, it appears as if the southern boundary of that project is going to stop at the southern boundary of the former BP-
Right.
...site. Is there a reason, given that eventually, we hope that site's going to be developed, to include the former Pasco Aziz site, is there a reason it didn't go a little further south?
Right. As part of the, again, as part of the Waukegan lighting project, IDAT mandates that their lighting transitions away, they don't want the lighting to stop at the intersection. So as part of the transition, if you notice, lights are extending past Everett, lights are also into, on both an east and west approaches of Everett, because the way IDAT dictates their lighting, you know, they run through those calculations, they want to make sure that there's a transition as you move south, and they don't want to stop right at the intersection. That's why you see the lightings are going beyond here, lighting is going up to here and up to here.
But I was curious as to why it didn't continue to slightly further south, to include what would be probably the entirety of that new development project eventually, which would include the old Pasco Aziz site?
I think one of the reasons, if I recall, I think we wanted to see, again, that the curb cut locations could, so let's say we try to put a light over here, and if they come with a plan, and depending on where their curb cut's going to be, they may have to move the light. So I think we didn't want to take the chance of going beyond what the IDAT requirements are, so that we are not, again, you know, restricting future development on their curb cut, because the proposed curb cut for the Pickers Development was somewhere down here, and the lighting just stopped north of it.
But perhaps, once the development comes back in for approval and it does move forward, we may be able to extend it down.
We can extend the light, that's correct.
Great, thank you.
In that case, we could also make the developer responsible for it, but we're not paying for it.
Right. Any questions? If I can briefly update on the TIF funds?
Any other questions?
Okay, on the proposal.
I'd like to move ahead with this by making a motion to, for the contract for the preliminary engineering services, to get this project underway.
I'll second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, Beth. Our next item on the agenda is the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, which I will report on. We had a meeting here a week ago today, and some of the topics covered was, again, the video that the high school was working on called Trainception. I believe they're close to being finished, I'm not sure that it's completely wrapped up, but we're waiting for the final rollout of that, which we're going to kick off with the Safety Week sometime this month yet, is that Karina, or are you?
First week of November.
In November, okay, we'll push it back to November. The other thing we talked about was the Metro schedule, which I think many, many of our fellow Aldermen are certainly on the trains, and we know that the schedule's been torn apart with the proposed construction, but now I understand that's all going to be back to normal again, as they rethink their whole construction schedule and the rebuilding of those eight bridges. So I suppose that's good news for everybody again right now, at least get back to normal.
We appreciated having a train tonight that got us to the meeting on time.
See? That's, yeah. It was certainly upsetting to the commuters, and I know it also affected the commuters who are driving as well, because I know that the traffic going into the city in the morning was just absolutely terrible, based on, I think, a lot of people jumping into their cars to try to avoid the new Metro schedule. So we're glad to hear that at least they're addressing that for now, and that hopefully that will be worked out to everyone's satisfaction. Also, we spoke about the new state law, cellphone usage in school zones. We asked the police chief to get some more information out to the public as to how that new law actually works, how it's written. I know they did some enforcement in the school zones, and there's, the law is that you, within a school area, school zone area, you're not allowed to be on a cellphone when children are present. So it's, and I wanted to get that clarified and get that out to the public, because I think we did some enforcement, but I'm not sure that the public in general knew how that new law takes effect. So we will get more information out to the public on that as well.
When they are present means when they are in school or when they are walking along the sidewalk or something?
No, when they're physically present. When they're physically, visibly present.
Five-thirty in the afternoon at a field hockey game.
I couldn't tell you that. I think that's where I wanted to get some clarification, and there's also rules as to whether, you know, could you use Bluetooth, can you use, not use Bluetooth, and my understanding is you're not allowed to use any type of accessory, although it's very hard to determine as the person talking to themselves, or they're talking to someone else, how do you enforce that? But again, I think that's where we want to get some clarification out to the public and get them to understand what that law entails. And again, the law was passed, certainly from a safety standpoint, to encourage people not being distracted in the presence of those school-aged children. And we also spoke about, of course, school kids as well, walking across the street with phones in their hand and not looking either way, and that's a whole other issue, which, again, I think there's going to need some more education on, but we will get the information out on this state law that is just being implemented. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is an opportunity for public to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone from the public that wish to speak on non-agenda items this evening? Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. I will read the three items, and then we may take them collectively or piecemeal as you wish. First item being approval of the minutes of the September twentieth, two thousand and ten City Council meeting. The second being approval of authorized invoices and payrolls, and the third being authorization of treasurer's warrants to meet expenses of October two thousand and ten. Any questions, comments, or motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
This is a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Showenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, Beth. Our next item is additional items for council discussion. Any other discussion this evening? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.